I'd like to call the meeting to an end. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel, Alderman Consilla, Alderman Husa.
Here.
Alderman Bittner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Dillman.
Here.
Alderman Gah.
Here.
Alderman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Wyatt.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wigginton.
Here.
Alderman Barfield.
Here.
All the aldermen in the presence will call the barman now.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City's Attorney Warner.
Here.
Police Chief Wilkley.
Here.
Our Chief Comptore.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Major.
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Human Resources Director Sherry Paver.
Here.
Director of Parks and Recreation Doug Vella.
Here.
Health and Housing Director Rob Stabel.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Cool.
Here.
Director of Water Works Carly.
Here.
Director of Economic Development and Economic Castle.
Here.
Director of Library and the Andersons.
Here.
Wow, we're 100% over. That's great. Okay, this time ladies and gentlemen, for those who are able to, please join me voice first out. Pat, we will give truth. Pat, 53, would you please come forward and they're going to help lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Right up here gentlemen, and we'll start when you're ready. You can come up, that's fine, you can come right here to the front. Pluggings right up here. Come right across here.
Check nice and clear.
Just stand up, and when you're ready to start, just start the pledge. Okay, just face the flag here guys.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, thank you. I'm working on one of the...
That's cute, that's cute, I love it.
They were questioning me out there. You guys got some good questions. But I told them I really always pleased to talk to the scouts since their mayor was a scout leader or scout manager for 12 years, and I told them how, how much that everything they learn as scouts can make a big difference in their lives, can help save somebody's life of their own, and can teach you a skill that you learned, and help teach you a career. And I told them that both of our sons, my wife's here today too, that both of our sons are Eagle Scouts, and they were always amazed, but I told them, people are going to be excited someday when they interview you that you're an Eagle. And both of them to this day said, Dad, I always thought you were always telling us that stuff, but it really does, because everywhere we've gone, people have asked us about being an Eagle Scout. Good luck to you guys, and continue to do good things.
Not that I can say that, no.
This time I just want to touch things on, well, open public participation in just a minute. When you do come forward, try to keep it to something, city business, that's pretending to the city, give your name, try to keep to two, three hours, because you have a very full agenda tonight. And before that, I just want to say, as far as public, the preparedness emergency things, that if we had to leave this building ever, for some reasons, a storm or fire, we'd ask you to carefully go out, the main lobby doors, police officers who are here will guide you. We'd ask you, if possible, to go across the street carefully, and meet in front of the courthouse signs, so that we can kind of touch base, and make sure that you tell us all the friends you came with or you were sitting with, that they all got out. If we have storms, they will guide you across the lobby downstairs, make your way across to the court's office, to the basement, into our storm shelter area. We hope we don't need those things, but we always need to make mention. And then, if you do speak tonight, if you do get called on after you raise your hand, come to the microphone, speak, enter the microphone, because Alderman, I still ask, I think we've made some improvements on our problem we were having, I think we got some better audio, since we had a few problems a couple weeks ago, but please, once again, use your microphone. At this time, we have no public hearing, I'm going to open public participation, and ask if anyone this evening has anything that they wish you to share or ask, or not going to get answered, but you deserve to share. Anyone this evening? Okay, in the back of the room, yes sir.
That speed control pit or whatever on South 27th Street from Union School, it used to be, all the only people speeding down there are women and wooders, but it needs to be on South 27th Street, where they go roaring through that stoplight, a stop sign down there without even slowing down, as a wrecked area, a couple days ago, and it's a wonder about that kill gone, or sooner or later, somebody probably will. Union School was at a trivia contest, but they couldn't have it in Bellville, so they're spending their money on charity hikes. Air Force pays taxpayer money and makes it easier for mental weak people to spend their money out of state, and a $15,000 bond for first degree murders, it's been a light, I didn't know you could even get out of a hospital.
Mr. Mayor, we have nothing to do with the courthouse.
Well, I know, I know.
Okay, but I'm just, as much as we have, please keep it to city businesses and information. Okay, well, thank you.
I'm not sure. To deal with the federal government getting out of control, I think we should nominate April 19th as Patriot's Day. Thank you.
Who else, someone else hand their hand up in that? Yes, sir.
I was confused, President of the Center for Racial Harmony here in Belleville, we're a 27-year-old, 501(c)(3), or 503(c)(5), did I correct my class?
Yeah.
Sorry. Right over on Second Street here, close to downtown, 27-years-old. I'm here tonight to support Kayla Adams and some of our Belleville students on the Belleville Peace Festival, that's now in its third year. The cities of tomorrow are diverse and inclusive, by 2043, there will be no dominant or racial ethnic groups in the United States of America. Kids get that. And in the news, we see a lot of negative reactions to shootings, etc., protesting. Our kids at Belleville's want to have an expression of peace. And so, we're here to support who the title sponsors on the event. There's been a stipulation that we need to get insurance to get for them, it's not a big deal, we've already courted it out, it's a one-day event, no liquor sales, the bidders aren't collecting money for the festival itself, they're collecting their own money, so it should be less than $300, and we'll have that long in advance of the event. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Oh, also, we have an event on the 25th of this month, a week from Wednesday, we're having a town hall format at Belleville's, we'd like to see you all at, it's going to be big, thank you.
Thank you. Then, we've worked with Kayla and Racial Harmony, this is the third year, as you said, obviously, and it's great to see the young people come together with worthy causes. Anyone else? Hearing no one else, I'm going to close public participation. Move on now to, we have no presentations or appointments tonight, no special recognitions, so we'll go into the approval of events, we have, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the City Council meeting, located 2nd, 2018. Motion by Alderman Wigginton, second by Alderman Schaefer. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of receiving and filing the minutes, signify by saying aye. All right. Close, motion carried. Claims to paywall dispersment.
Did you see this last?
I was asked for a motion to approve the claims and dispersments in the amount of $7,743,576.78, and the paywall in the amount of $864,696.13. Do I hear a motion?
Lou.
Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Husa. Any discussion on the claims to paywall dispersment? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Husa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye. Motion carries. We have a Treasury report from February 2018, and we have a Stega cash investment report from 2000 February 2018, and I think we have to watch, is it standard due to the revenue?
This is with a bracket.
This is a bracket, no doubt. Okay, so it's the way it's written, it's okay.
Yeah, it's, yes, because the last one was not a complete report, so.
Okay, I knew there was something there, you reminded me, I was supposed to ask you. So, do we have a motion to receive and file those reports? Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Hazel. Any questions on those reports? All in favor of receiving and filing for audit, signify by saying aye. All right. Close, motion carried. We go to all reports administration, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the bid, the lowest, the lowest most responsible bid from B7 Roofing LLC, in the amount of $36,250 for roof work at 512 West Main. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman...
I'll make a motion that the bid be accepted.
Second by Alderman Consilla. Discussion on this?
Quick question there, what funds are these money coming out of?
The, the, this here, the fund Jamie and Kenny's tip. The roof repair is going to come from tip, okay? I think we have a quote from the architect of 40, up to 45.
Estimate is $45,000.
And we had some good bids, we had a number of bidders, and this bid came in, we thought was a very good bid, and very good references, and it's $36,000 as you can see, so we're happy about that. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
How long of, do they have a warranty on this roof?
Kenny, do you know anything about that, or is...
There, there will be a 20-year warranty.
Okay.
Following installation.
I thought that was the case, what did I ask you? Okay. Hearing no further questions, I ask for a roll call, all.
Consilla.
Aye.
Husa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. Just a quick reminder, we are doing as we were asked to consider. Pay attention, because we're starting with a different person each time, so it's not always the first person on the vote, the voting first, so we're trying to be more inclusive on.
They could let me go.
Okay, move on to Streets and Grades, Alderman, we continue to have a few.
Mayor, with your approval and approval at council, would it be okay if I read number one by itself, two through seven, which is our maintenance agreements, eight, nine, and 10, which is our programs together, and then 11, 12 separately, to expedite this?
No problems, I'll give the council. Okay, let's start with number one.
All right, you got any problems with that? All right, hold on just a second here. All right. All right, on behalf of Streets and Grade Committee, I would like, with 11-b, number one, by the way, on behalf of Streets and Grade Committee, I make a motion to approve the joint agreement with IDOT and City of Belleville in the amount of $695,285 for West Main Streets Gate Tiff 3 Federal.
And motion by Alderman Wigginton, second by Alderman Husa, to approve this recommendation coming from Streets and Grades, working with IDOT on the Streets Gate, do I have discussion? Roll call.
Husa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Wigginton.
All right, on behalf of Streets and Grade Committee, 11-b, two, I would like a motion to approve Mike A. Mage Trucking Incorporated in the amount of $39,065, Group 1A and 1B, for 2019 general maintenance aggregates MFT funds. 11-b, three, I would like to make a motion to approve Asphalt Sales and Products Incorporated in the amount of $99,000, Group 2A, Chris Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $48,000, Group 2B, for 2019 general maintenance asphalt MFT funds. 11-b, four, I'd like to make a motion to approve Beal Millen Logistics LLC in the amount of $61,600, Group 3A, $57,092, Group 3B, and JTC Petroleum Company in the amount of $170,890.2, Group 3C, for 2019 general maintenance oil and ship MFT funds. 11-b, number five, I'd like to make a motion to approve paving maintenance supply in the amount of $1,500 for 2019 general maintenance sealant MFT funds. 11-b, six, motion to approve Metal Culverts Incorporated in the amount of $17,571.19 for 2019 general maintenance culverts MFT funds. And 11-b, seven, motion to approve concrete supply of Illinois in the amount of $8,100 for 2019 general maintenance concrete MFT funds, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Wigginton, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schaefer, do I hear discussion on this group from 11-b, two through 11-b, seven? Hearing no questions, roll call.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Husa.
Aye.
Those motions carry. Alderman Wigginton, second by Alderman Schaefer, do I hear discussion on this group from 11-b, eight?
Okay, I want to read eight, nine, and 10 together, Mayor. On behalf of Streets and Grade Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve DMS in the amount of $202,524.80 for 2019 sidewalk program MFT funds. 11-b, nine, motion to approve 40 contracting in the amount of $96,944.50 for 2019 infrastructure program MFT funds. And 11-b, 10, motion to approve the contract renewal for Elecrico in the amount of $61,477.40 for 2019 traffic signal program MFT Tiff funds, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Wigginton, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Dillman, do I hear discussion? Roll call on these three just read proposals.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Husa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Motion carries. We go down to the next one.
11-b, 11. On behalf of Streets and Grade Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve Elecrico in amount not to exceed $2,000 for boring conduit for lighting installation at Sunset Ridge MFT funds, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Wigginton, second by Alderman Schaefer, do I hear a discussion? Roll call.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Husa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Husa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Consilla, 11-e, one, 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 one.
I make, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I move that we approve the fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Wigginton, do I hear discussion? Any other questions? We've had quite a few weeks of this. Hearing no further discussion, roll call.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Husa.
Aye.
Bittner.
No.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Husa.
Aye.
Bittner.
No.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Husa.
Aye.
Bittner.
No.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Motion carries, 15-e, one.
Okay. We move on. Zoning Board of Appeals.
Excuse me, sir.
No, you missed.
One more. I'm sorry, Alderman Consilla, I can pass.
Yes, sir.
Do you need to move to seat two?
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to approve the budget amendments as recommended by the Finance Director.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, I hear second by Alderman Schaefer, do I hear discussion on the budget amendments? Roll call.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Husa.
Aye.
Read them all.
Is that a problem, anyone?
I don't have a problem with any of them.
We've got eleven D one through eleven D four, is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, at this time I'm going to ask you to please read these recommendations as a title only. So first of all, we're not supposed to argue yet. I'm going to ask you to please read these recommendations as a rule.
Eleven D one, motion to approve sixteen March eighteen, John Anderson. A request for a special use permit to establish a metal building larger than one hundred and fifty square feet at seven oh three Schlierer Jermaine Road, parcel number thirteen eleven zero one zero 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 three three, located in A one single family residence district. Applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point zero nine four and one six two point five one five, Ward five, zoning board unanimously recommended approval. Eleven D two, motion to approve seventeen March eighteen, Benny Carr Jr., a request for a sign installation permit in the area of Special Control for signings at one twenty four East Main Street, parcel number zero eight two two zero three three eight zero four nine, located in C two heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code one five five point zero five two and one five five point zero five three, Ward six, zoning board unanimously recommended approval. Eleven D three, motion to approve eighteen March eighteen, G S N Bellville LLC, a request for a special use permit to establish a metal building larger than one hundred and fifty square feet at seventeen Monroe Heights Center, parcel number zero eight zero eight zero two zero two zero zero seven, located in C two heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point two four eight and one six two point five one five, Ward three, zoning board unanimously recommended approval. L D four, motion to approve nineteen March eighteen, G S N Bellville LLC, a request for a special use permit to operate a storage building at seventeen Monroe Heights Center, parcel number zero eight zero eight zero two zero two zero zero seven, located in C two heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point two four eight and one six two point five one five, Ward three, zoning board unanimously recommended approval.
This time I'd like to ask if there's a motion to approve the zoning board recommendations, eleven D one, eleven D two, eleven D three, eleven D four. I have a proper argument to draw, hold it still, second by Oliver Shaper.
That's over there, next to King's Point.
Any questions on any of those? Hearing none, all in favor of those motions from the zoning board? And have the proper arguments drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. We'll move on to page five. Eleven E, this comes from Economic Development and we're back to Mr. Oliver and Consilla. And can, I guess, if we could, can we do the first two together?
I think they would fit.
Okay, do you have, you okay with everybody? So you want to bring that forward?
On behalf of the Economic Development Annexation Committee, I make a motion to approve the letter of agreement with F K G Oil regarding expansion of the Belleville Enterprise Zone two thousand and sixteen related to the development of a convenience store located at the northeast quadrant of Illinois Route one sixty one and Fullerton Road. A further move to appoint, to approve agreement for professional services with Economic Development Resources for the expansion of the Belleville Enterprise Zone two thousand and sixteen to include approximately five point five acres at the northeast quadrant of Illinois Route one sixty one and Fullerton Road.
We have a motion by Oliver Consilla coming from Economic Development. Do I hear a second, Oliver Pousa? Do I hear discussion on these two items pertaining to F K G Oil and their expansion of the model? Roll call.
Gentlemen.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Shaper.
Aye.
Those two motions carry on. Consilla, how do you put, is there a problem with the next three together?
I think that we should do three separately and then the last two together.
Eleven E three separate.
Okay, a motion to approve the letter of agreement with Michael Wahlbacher and Kenneth Wahlbacher, self-declared trust regarding the reimbursement of green space fees and plat vacation.
And motion by Oliver Consilla, second by Oliver Shaper. Do I hear any discussion on this motion? Roll call.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Shaper.
Aye.
Dillon.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd like to read eleven E four and five together.
Okay.
Motion to approve the letter of agreement with Phillips Investment LLC regarding expansion of the Belleville Enterprise Zone two thousand and sixteen related to the development of a fifty unit assisted living and twenty-four unit memory care facility. Further move to approve agreement for professional services with Economic Development Resources for the expansion of Belleville Enterprise Zone two thousand and sixteen to include approximately thirteen acres at the northeast quadrant of Frank Scott Parkway and South Eleventh Street.
And a motion coming from Oliver Consilla, economic development, second by Oliver Shaper. Any discussion? Roll call.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Elmore. Wigginton.
Aye.
Ovian.
No.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
No.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
No.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Shaper.
Aye.
Dillon.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Motion carries, what do you have? Let's break the rules. And take care of the economic development motions. We go with page six. Planning Commission, Oliver Dillon, this is here, I believe. We have to, I'm just reading, does it bring some planning permission?
Well, they're two alike, actually.
Two alike, can I read those two together?
Yeah, I'll read the first one by itself.
Okay, sorry.
On behalf of the Planning Commission, I'd like to make a motion on eleven dash F one Gateway Storage Mall. Site plan for the development of two commercial storage buildings located on one acre C two heavy commercial district, zone parcel. Planning Commission recommended approval of the site plan.
Okay, motion Oliver Dillon, do I hear a second? Second by Oliver Hazel, do I hear any discussion on this item here in certain condition coming from planning? Roll call.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Shaper.
Aye.
Dillon.
Aye.
Steele.
Motion carries, Oliver Dillon.
Eleven dash F two Parkway Business Center, amend preliminary plat for the subdivision of a fifty-one point zero six acre A one single family residence district, C one light commercial district, split zone parcel into nine lots located at zero Frank Scott Parkway West. Planning Commission recommended approval.
Do I read the next one?
And the next one, sure. Eleven dash F three Parkway Business Center. The site plan, the final plat for development and subdivision of the fifty-one point zero six acre A one single family residence district, C one light commercial district, split zone parcel into nine lots located at zero Frank Scott Parkway West. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the site plan, final plat, with the stipulation that details regarding construction materials, building heights, landscaping plans, and trash enclosure specifications be submitted prior to the site plan, final plat recording.
You have a motion from Oliver Dillon, second by Oliver Shaper. It's referencing two recommendations for Parkway Business Center, for both Parkway Business Center, coming from the Planning Commission.
Mayor.
Yes.
I just, where exactly is this?
This is, this is the site. It's Frank Scott Parkway, slightly south of Eleventh Street on the west side.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes.
I'm shaking my head, okay?
I, I, okay, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we're just, they're back to people who are out here and the tanks just put in some of their sewer just to reset it. So there's still some equipment out there.
It's right down from the school.
Huh?
This is right down from the school.
Yeah, just, yeah.
What, a new subdivision?
Categorizing on what we want to par a little bit a few minutes ago.
Right, okay.
Yeah, it was just down from the street.
It's on the other side.
The other side, southern west side of the street.
All right, gotcha.
Just, just slightly south of the west side.
Okay, all right.
I thought it was.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, these both coming from the Planning Commission. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Weren't we switching that plat from nine lots to eight?
This one?
The original plat showed a development for development of the site. The ninth block, in this particular instance, you'll have eight lots for development for on either side. The ninth block that we're referring to is the nearest to the east that will lead to the subdivision to be developed.
Okay, all right.
Just like, oh, good. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, and there's no further questions. I call for a roll call for those two items.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Shaper.
Aye.
Dillon.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Motion carries, Traffic Committee.
On behalf, thank you, Your Honor. On behalf of the motion, the motion for the Traffic Committee, I'd like to read eleven G one, eleven G two, and eleven G three, all at, all at one time.
If there are any objects, I'll allow you to do that. Okay?
Eleven G one, motion to approve no truck, truck traffic signed in Kilmar Woods. Eleven G two, motion to approve loading zone, no parking, signed in the first block of South Jackson Street on the east side of the street at yellow striped zone between alley and corner, a parking lot at ten South Jackson Street. And eleven G three, motion to approve no parking signs on Union Avenue, seventy feet, seventy south of three oh three Union Avenue on the east side to improve the dead end. So moved.
And motion, and I'll go, second by Oliver Anthony, to approve those three recommendations coming from Traffic. Any discussion? All in favor of these three motions and to have the proper arguments drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. We go now to ordinance and legal review. At this time I ask for a motion, where's the?
I'm still here.
Oliver Wigginton, do you want to handle those?
We'll have to read each one separately, Your Honor.
This time.
Okay, on behalf of Ordinance and Legal Committee, I'd like to make a motion, eleven dash eight one, to approve amending ordinances seventy-nine thirty-five dash two thousand and one six and seventy-nine sixty-two dash two thousand and one six, designating banks as depositaries for city funds. So moved.
Motion Oliver Wigginton, do I hear a second? Second by Oliver Shaper. Discussion on this item? Roll call.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Epstein.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Shaper.
Aye.
Dillon.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Motion carries, Oliver Wigginton, the next one.
On behalf of Ordinance and Legal Committee, eleven dash H two, I would like to make a motion to approve amending chapter thirty-three Public Safety Law Enforcement, section thirty-three point zero two four Auxiliary Police Officers of the Revised Ordances of the City of Belleville, Illinois. So moved.
Motion Oliver Wigginton, do I hear a second? Second by Oliver Steele. Go in the back row this time. Motion a second, both of you made any discussion on this item? I think we talked about it quite a bit in committee recently. There's no further questions, I call for a roll call vote.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Shaper.
Aye.
Dillon.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Motion carries, I want to thank Chief Clay and Derek Carter for working together on that and we've been talking about it, working on it on and off for a long time. I think it's going to be something to help, please, to talk to, as convenient here for St. Clair's is asking, it has potential to help us in many ways and I thank everybody for working together on that arguments. We go over to the.
Eleven dash H C, on behalf of Ordinance and Legal Committee, I would like to make a motion to approve amending chapter thirty-two Organizations, Department of Public Works, chapter nine, Cemeteries, chapter ninety-two, Health and Sanitation, and chapter ninety-four Parks and Recreation of the Revised Ordances of the City of Belleville, Illinois. So moved.
And motion Oliver Wigginton, do I hear a second? Second by Oliver Pousa, and I hear discussion. Roll call this one.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Shaper.
Aye.
Dillon.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Motion carries, Communications. I'm going to ask our city partner.
Is that one of those people that's giving a hundred thousand dollars? Wouldn't they?
Do you want?
No, 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 this is a different.
I'd like to read twelve D separately, if we can.
Yeah, it's a cross the street. But don't, that's not, it's not that Parkway West. Parkway West has got different. I'm looking for, I'm looking for the, I'm looking for the, the plans or something.
Everything except the one that she asked me to explain.
Okay. Twelve A, Memorial Day Parade, Monday, May twenty eighth, twenty eighteen. Request from Memorial Day Association to hold an annual Belleville Memorial Day Parade ceremony, May twenty eighth, twenty eighteen, ten AM. Street closure request, nine AM, South Second Street between Washington and Harris Street. Ten AM, rolling street closure along Story Road. Additional city services requested, barricades, no parking signs, chairs, tents, electric, and police department personnel. Twelve B, Pride Fest Saturday, June ninth, twenty eighteen. Request from Metro East Pride Fest, number one. To hold annual Metro East Pride Fest, June 9, 2018, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Street closure request, West Main Street from 159 to mid-block between Second and Third Street, one block on North First, South First, South Second, and South Second Street, to parking lot entrances and out of that quadrants. Additional city services requested, barricades, no parking signs, trash collectors, picking tables, electric, and police and street department personnel. 12C, Florida Bell, Friday, July 13, 2018. Request from Bellam Parking Recreation Department to hold the annual Florida Bell, July 13, 2018, 8:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m. Event starts and ends at Union United Methodist Church, using designated routes for the five and fifteen mile route. Street closure request, 7:45 p.m. to 8:45 p.m., intersection of East B Street and North Douglas, and one block north, Southeast and Westland intersection. 8:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m., rolling closure along the routes. Additional city services requested, barricades, no parking signs, trash collectors, pickings tables, and police and fire department personnel. Places to move in across East Main Street and West Main Street approximately one month prior to event. 12E, Thanksgiving Day Pride Day, Thursday, November 22, 2018. Request from the Bellam Township Ice Hockey Club to hold annual Pride Run and Half Mile Run, November 22, 2018, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Street closure request, 7:00 a.m. to 10:15 a.m., start and finish line first block of West Main Street, from 159 to east side of First Street and northwest quadrant of Public Square. Pride Run Route, rolling street closure within city limits. Additional city services requested, barricades, no parking signs, trash collectors, pickings tables, electric, and police department personnel. 12F, Gingerbread Pride Run and Walk, Saturday, December 1, 2018. Request from Bellam Parking Recreation Department to hold the annual Gingerbread Pride Run and Walk, December 1, 2018, 8:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m., beginning and ending at 5:10 West Main Street. Street closure request, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., East Conne Lane and West Main on Fourth to Sixth Street, 8:15 a.m. to 8:30 a.m., West Conne Lane and West Main Street on Fourth to Sixth Street, 8:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m., rolling street closure along route. Additional city services requested, barricades, no parking signs, trash collectors, electric, and police department personnel. Places to move in across West Main Street approximately one month prior to event. 12G, Electronic Recycling Event, Saturday, 9/5, 2018. Request from St. Clair Lodge, number 24, a.m. to a.m., sign-in log, to use twenty parking spaces in the city parking lot located between East B Street and East H Street, on 9/5, 2018, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. For an Electronic Recycling Event open to the public, no city services requested.
I hear motions to approve the, uh, request for, uh, communications as just read. Which will tell me that in my own, uh, PUSA. Any discussion on those?
There, does 12B, the, uh, does this read that the first block on North First and South First is closed? Is that what that reads?
Yeah.
Is that what it is every?
Yeah. They block it off, but the first and second they'll block off to, North First will be blocked off, but, um, North Second they'll block off to the entrance to the parking, the city parking lot there, so we'll still pull it out and leave the parking lot.
I thought, I thought, I know it's a Saturday, but I thought somebody needs access to the courthouse at some point, maybe not.
Well, we have, they still have access, uh, we still.
From Washington.
They can come in off of Washington and just come out. They'll go and block off all the courthouse entrance, South First.
Yeah, for those people who might be working, they can still get into the garage, we'll make that work, if not, they have access to the courthouse. We, we never had a problem with this, it's like, probably a little here, more. Okay, we have, uh, those group of, pardon, I mean, uh, requests for communications. A motion of second, do I hear? There's no other questions? All in favor of approving those communications as read by the city clerk, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion carries. We go back now to, uh, to answer to these, uh, 12B.
12B, Streets Festival, Saturday, August 4, 2018. Request from Rachel Harvey to hold an annual Streets Festival, August 4, 2018, 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Street closure request, 10:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., fourth block of West Main from east side of First Street, 159, and northwest quadrant of Public Square. Additional city services requested, barricades, no parking signs, trash collectors, pickings tables, and electric.
The first of all, I ask that there's a motion, is there going to be any motion put this on the agenda? Alderman Hazel, second. Second round with Steele. Okay, roll with the session.
Okay, so, we've received some emails about this. I understand they did not show up at Main Street. Is there someone here representing Bellam Main Street?
Well, hold it, hold it, no question, hang on a second. We had communications with Main Street, I think, uh.
Bellam Main Street provided us an email this morning stating that they approved the event. They went through what their exercise was, um, and then from there, then we received an email late this afternoon from a business owner.
Okay, and the one that we received, they, it's also, there's another one from another business that's on the same, on West Main also.
That's what it says, but I don't know if that's.
I heard from one person, and this one through the channels, and this is the third year we've had the event. And, um, you know.
What about the suggestion of the park at the corner of East Main and Mascota? Is there not enough room there?
Yeah, we looked at that before, this event, uh, has grown somewhat, and, um.
I'm not against the event, I'm just, I'm asking, this is my board and I gotta.
They're coming at you. I, I just believe that we have, uh, adequately been answering these things and been trying to work with them, but there was a process put in, and then, and nobody showed up at that meeting to express any concern with Bellam Main Street, so they sent it to us, uh, you know, with their, with their blessing, and, um, I, I, I don't feel bad about the proposal, that's all. I think, I think the proposal that's here tonight has been communicated properly, and I think it's, um, I think it's okay. Alderman.
Your Honor, I question, uh, why can't it just stay on the, the quadrant up there?
It, it has grown somewhat, and they first talked about First Street, and quite honestly, First Street sometimes wasn't even, you know, we've got it with the other event because they had it. Uh, it's, it, it grew a little bit last year, these, these are, uh, young people trying to grow the event even more. And I think during the time when, uh, it's great to see young people want to do things in a peaceful way. Uh, I would probably say that having the space that we don't have to react at the last minute with a large group of people, and having it end up being out in the street is probably best to be in the streets, a possibility. The businesses in question will still have, in front of their store, open for that side street and the next one, they can still go down, they can turn. We're only talking now, closing off from the, from the crosswalk at First, First and Main, up to the crosswalk by the courthouse, uh, on, it's, on West Main. So we're only talking one block, we're not talking any side streets, and we're not blocking off anything in front of any business. In that block, it's either, it's courthouse property on both sides. Health Department on one side, courthouse wall on the other side. So there's no businesses in this block. Now, it's true, it will stop, uh, it will stop, uh, westbound traffic from, uh, coming down to the first two blocks of Main Street, uh, but on a Saturday afternoon, I'm gonna say aye. And I think we've been evaluating again this year, that the event has grown, uh, but I think that, uh, they asked for this location for the very first year to try to build awareness of, of their concerns and their desire to spread the peaceful, the beauty and the love. And, um, you know, i- if they came up with, as a protest, and they went to protest on the square, the police department would work with them. This is not a protest. They're trying to turn this into something that becomes more educational and more, uh, dialogue, I believe, uh, to talk, to talk about peaceful ways and which how we all get along and work together, so.
And they expect about two hundred people or more, plus they have vendors that it could be selling food and other things going on.
Wasn't last year, there was like fifty or sixty of them, and I don't know.
It was, the weather last year, some of you remember, I think took a pretty chilly rainy, and I remember the day, it really dampened, gave that, which weather can do it any event, it can do it to any one of our events. I, I was down there, and I felt like the weather was, you know, certainly a deterrent last year to their success. I think, you know, once again, I can't promise that they're gonna have good weather this year, but I think that their event has shown signs of growing, and we felt that this was not, when staff reviewed it, we didn't feel like this was an unreasonable request. And then I went through the channels, with the Main Street businesses and having a chance to speak, et cetera.
If I may, uh, when I look at the application, it says vendors, I don't know how many vendors they're gonna have, if there's gonna be three, or if there's gonna be thirty, or, you know, and I'm not trying to be facetious, I just don't know.
I don't think they know yet, I mean, it's, uh, it's August, I think they're still, they're putting it out there to try to get vendors, and, and hopefully they will, you know, have some great success, but I don't think they know at this time, from the last I talked to them.
And, uh, I think the event from one to six, and we're starting to set up the streets at 10:30, you know, the, the businesses that might be missing people, they could at least get a half day in. I'm thinking if we started setting it up at noon instead of, you know, 10:30, they lose the whole day.
I don't know, are we setting up a stage or anything, or is, is that on the street?
Yes. Last year, we did not set up until one o'clock, it was supposed to be blocked off by letters, but there were still cars there, so we couldn't even block it off until four thirty, we just wired our stuff.
And we're gonna work on the cars, there was a little problem with a lot of police signage that doesn't miscue. We'll get that taken care of ahead of time.
What'd she say?
Um.
I couldn't hear.
Her, her, last year, they, uh, they had a problem with some parking on the street, there was, there was a little mix-up with parking, getting the parking noises out, so they had some trouble moving some cars. And this is what she sometimes, they're gonna have a stage for the, some of the music and that, and they wanted to put it out, um, onto the, uh, street where they had more room, if the crowd would roll, if they could have that access. So, setting up a stage does take additional time, um. I mean, I would say that's, I, I think, we certainly have, um, we have a group of young people here that are requesting opportunity to try to grow this. I think it's all of our responsibility this year to try to go up there, pay attention to it, and if we believe to sit and talk with them about modifying next year, uh, and making some adjustments, I think that's something we should really do then. I, I don't feel that, based on the way they've handled themselves the first and second year, and the way they've been very mature about working with us, and what they're trying to accomplish, um, I don't think this is terrible by any means to try to do this. I, I know that, I learned a long time ago, I'm very pro-business, believe me. I have a, my wife has a business down in that very corridor, and we've talked about it, but it's, we don't feel by any means this is gonna hurt her business, now she tends to be closed due to the girl around the Saturday anyway. But, but my point is this, I think we have to constantly evaluate, sometimes we have to adjust. I don't believe this request is out of line, and, and I do believe that in some instances, as some of you know, we're never gonna meet every person, and there was a method here put into place, and no one communicated any information today, and no one came to any of those other meetings when they had an opportunity, so. My personal opinion, if this is, uh, if this is to be a tie, I'll, I, I would vote to, to break the tie. Uh, but of course, I will then, once again, say, we need to have, evaluate each and every year, and if it doesn't live up to their, their expectations, then we might have to adjust some regulations for next year. Alderman Wigginton.
I just think these young people need to be cognizant of the fact that, um, that they, they have some responsibilities, they have to be orderly, peaceful, and it is a major artery, and there, there are businesses. Uh, you know, sometimes, young people don't, uh, relate to what's going on, you know, in cities or business or whatever the case might be. Uh, I've seen nothing wrong with it, but I think they have to be aware of, of the surroundings and their environment that they're in.
I kind of disagree, I think we have, I've had to go through my times. Uh, with this particular block, when I talk to my staff, it's, like I said, they're not in front of any business here. Yes, it does, uh, it does, it does curtail some traffic flow going west on Main Street for those hours, but it, it, it's not like this is set up right in front of anybody's business. They're not gonna be in front of their doorways, they're not, it's, it's up there in that block where it's basically all courthouse or health department property. Yes, sir.
Mayor, do you know how the businesses are notified by the Bellam Main Street? Is it via email about these events?
They receive an agenda.
They receive a gen?
Yes.
So it's on the agenda, so they know that?
Sure, it was placed on the agenda.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'd just like to offer my support for this event. I've attended it in the past, and I've enjoyed it. In my understanding, it doesn't even block First Street, it's from the east side.
No, it's the only first thing open.
And so, all of the businesses still have access, and I really enjoy the singing groups, the dance troupe, the young people that come together, the high school groups that come together for this event. It's really a nice event. I recommend more people going to it, to get a better idea of what this event is like.
If we're, if you all get a chance to try to get better attendance, and, and they would love nothing more than the weather, so I'll try to offer that. Yes, sir.
I agree with everything you've said. I think Alderman Delon brings, touched on at one point. I think, if you're talking about maximum square footage for them, for the event, with their stage, they'd actually have more on the quadrant than they would on West Main. Square footage space-wise, you want the maximum for your stage?
You have a lot of items up there, though. You have benches, you have artwork, you have different things that are right in the middle, where you're gonna set things up, there's, and there's some obstacles there, and that's why we talked about, uh, this, I, I didn't disagree with them at this time, but. And once again, get up there this year, take a look around, and see if you can find everybody and do better and work with them. I just think it's great that some young people have come together and want to put together. I'll be quite honest, I've never said it, maybe I said it to Kayla three years ago, um, and I'm not saying it because Alex McHugh's here tonight, but his mother and I talked about an event like this probably ten years ago, about doing something along this line, and we just never got around to it, but Mary and I had this conversation more than once, probably going back into the first couple of years on the air. So I, I applaud what they're trying to do, and I think, you know, once again, if, if, if there's some things we need to adjust, this council, they get up there, you can adjust from all the way. Yes.
I, I just wanna say, if there was an agenda given out, they've had plenty of time then.
If you read this, that people.
To, to appeal this, so.
They've had plenty of time.
Says here, that one week before their last main Bellam Main Street meeting, she emailed all the NMS members in short email, um, said material, with materials along with the draft agenda, including the peace festival on that agenda.
What happens if they're not a part of the Bellam Main Street? Do they not have a voice then, or?
They, 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 they know, they're very much, they're very familiar, the lady, the one lady is a past president of Main Street.
Okay.
The other person who's, I believe, upset, is currently getting ready to move their business already. So, I think, but I know, sometimes I know too much, but I, I don't have any problem bringing this to you, asking for any reason to delay it or to not move it.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Thanks for clearing it up, thank you.
Okay, we, we have a motion of second, correct?
Correct.
And, uh, any further questions? All in favor of this motion, I, I'll tell you one, let's do a roll call. Mike Rock.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Shaker.
Aye.
Gentlemen.
No.
God.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyga.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries, 15 to one. Uh, we go down now to petitions, we have none. Resolutions, are, is there a problem if we receive resolutions together?
No.
No one? I ask for a motion to read by title only and as a group. Resolution 3330, 3331, 3332, and 3333. Do we have a motion, Alderman Wigginton? Do I hear a second? Second round with Pusa. As is to read, spelled by title only and as a group. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion carries.
14A, Resolution 3330, a resolution of the City of Bellam, Illinois, authorizing the application of the local agency agreement for federal specification, West Main Street streetscape. 14B, Resolution 3331, a resolution amending the annual budget of the City of Bellam, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May, 2017, and ending on the 30th day of April, 2018. 14C, Resolution 3332, a resolution amending the annual budget of the City of Bellam, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May, 2017, and ending on the 30th day of April, 2018. 14D, Resolution 3333, a resolution requesting permission from IAC to program 159 with a Memorial Day Parade, May 28, 2018.
I hear motions to approve those resolutions as read. Motion by Mr. Shaker, second round with God, do I hear discussion on those resolutions? 3330, 3331, 32, and 3333. Hearing no questions, welcome.
Pusa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Shaker?
Aye.
Gentlemen?
Aye.
God?
Aye.
Wyga?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wigginton?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Cincilla?
Aye.
Resolutions passed. Ordinance, uh, I ask for a motion, okay, first of all, is there any ordinance you want read separately? Number one, separate, so let's ask for a motion to, uh, to read ordinance number 81, 84, by Kyle Holy.
Your Honor, I'm gonna have to stay on 15B.
Oh, no, definitely get to it, there's only a standing on that one. Steven, over to the rest, I agree, which is okay. Okay, so we have a motion to read ordinance 81, 84, by Kyle Holy, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second round with Barfield, do I hear discussion? All in favor of reading ordinance 81, 84, by Kyle Holy, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion carries.
Bittner?
Oh wait.
Did I read?
Oh, I gotta read it. 15A, Ordinance 81, 84, 2018, and ordinance establishing the annual budget of the City of Bellam, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May, 2018, and ending on the 30th day of April, 2019.
I hear a motion to approve, motion by Mr. Shaker, second round with Steele, to approve ordinance number 81, 84. Any discussion on this, or, or, roll call.
Bittner?
No.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Cody?
Aye.
Shaker?
Aye.
Gentlemen?
Aye.
God?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wyga?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wigginton?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Cincilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Our 81, 84 pass is 15 to one. We move on now, there's no objection, we read the other ordinances together. There's no, we, uh, all, um, Randall's vote, he is abstaining, uh, which one do we have?
81, 85.
15B, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's, okay. So, that in mind, I ask for a motion to read 81, 85, 81, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, 93, 94, and 95, and 96, by Kyle Holy and.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman, uh, Wigginton, second round with Shaker. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion carries.
15B, Ordinance 81, 85, 2018, and ordinance amending ordinancees 79, 35, 2016, and 79, 62, 2016, that are being based at the path of course of the city property. 15C, Ordinance 81, 86, 2018, and ordinance amending chapter 33, public service law, and 73, 20024, auxiliary police officers, revised ordinances of the City of Bellam, Illinois. 15D, Ordinance 81, 87, 2018, and ordinance amending chapter 32, organization section 32.004, director of public works duties, chapter 91 cemetery, section 91.15, department of cemetery, chapter 92, health and sanitation, section 92.26, containers, and chapter 94, parking recreation section, 94.05, peril guidelines, revised ordinances of the City of Bellam, Illinois. 15E, Ordinance 81, 88, 2018, the zoning ordinance 16, March 18, John Anderson. 15F, Ordinance 81, 89, 2018, the zoning ordinance 17, March 18, Benny Carr Jr. 15G, Ordinance 81, 90, 2018, the zoning ordinance 18, March 18, GSM Bellam. 15H, Ordinance 81, 91, 2018, the zoning ordinance 19, March 18, GSM Bellam. 15I, Ordinance 81, 93, 2018, and ordinance amending chapter 75, traffic schedules, of revised ordinances of the City of Bellam, Illinois, as amended by amending portions of section thereof. 15J, Ordinance 81, 94, 2018, and ordinance amending chapter 76, parking schedules, of revised ordinances of the City of Bellam, Illinois, as amended by amending portions of section thereof. 15K, Ordinance 81, 95, 2018, and ordinance amending chapter 76, parking schedules, of the revised ordinances of the City of Bellam, Illinois, as amended by amending portions of section thereof. 15L, Ordinance 81, 96, 2018, and ordinance authorizing the dedication of Radisson Plaza and Tuna Park.
Do I hear motions to approve the ordinance that we just read? Alderman Pusa, second round with Steele, also once again noting that 35 vote, holdin' Randall is abstaining on 15B. Uh, if there's no further questions, roll call.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Shaker?
Aye.
Gentlemen?
Aye.
God?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wyga?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wigginton?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Cincilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Ordinance is passed. I'm finished with business. This one is a new business. I ask for a motion to approve motor claims, motor fuel claims in the amount of 169,674 and 17 cents.
So moved.
Alderman Cincilla, second round with Alderman. Uh, Gentlemen, discussion on motor fuel claims? Roll call.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Shaker?
Aye.
Gentlemen?
Aye.
God?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wyga?